City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded October 17, 2022.
I have seven o'clock. We will call the regular Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Christensen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Zarazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Niebone.
Here.
Shuda.
He is online.
Dalton. Fischler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Dean, you can hear us okay, right?
Um, maybe?
Maybe? That's because I'm on mute. Duh. Dean, you there, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Either one works. You don't know where I go. All right, um, we do have a quorum, so if you would join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Um, I did want to point out that Alderperson Shuda is joining us remotely. He actually took some time and went down to help the relief efforts in Florida, and he managed to find a business that had internet and is allowing him to login to join us tonight. So, thank you, Dean, for everything you're doing and for joining us tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
Um, we are... Tonight, we're considering the capital budget. However, operational budget is in the works. Some of the decisions that we make tonight will affect the operational budget. Uh, we're going to do something a little bit different than we've done in the past uh, to try and get more people involved. So Kerry and Cory and myself have been working on the operational budget now for quite some time, and Cory is going to record a presentation of the operational budget, and we will post the operational budget video, as well as the entire operational budget proposal, online this week. That gives everyone a chance to review the budget, hear the presentation, ask questions. We'd like those questions, if you could, sent via email to either the Treasurer's Office or my office. Of course, you can contact your Alderperson, and they'll forward it on. Um, and then we will have a special meeting ne- what? Tuesday, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll have a special meeting next week um, to go over the capital budget, answer any questions that people have since then. But this is an opportunity to try and get more involved. As a community member, you can see the operational budget, see the uh, the presentation of the budget, uh, and have some time to formulate questions, maybe digest a few things, before we actually have the formal presentation, which is next Tuesday. What time do we decide? Six o'clock? Six o'clock next Tuesday, right in this room. What? You're killing me. All right, um, yeah, and then hopefully we'll have the operational budget approved at our December meeting, uh, just in time for everybody to get their Christmas cards from Cory's office.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
The twenty... The special finance committee meeting will be on the 25th, you're saying?
Uh, is that next Tuesday?
That's Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that... Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Yes, 25th.
Thank you.
I didn't know what the date was. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to get it in the...
Alrighty, um, next is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register their request at this time with McKenna, who's over by the door. Uh, those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing, and we do not have any of those tonight, um, are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open. We have no public hearing items, so if there's anyone that wants to speak on any item on our agenda, you can register. Uh, Alderperson Carlson wants to speak on the non-agenda item. How many other ones? Everybody signed up that wants to? Okay, then I'll have you bring those up. And Alder... Alderman Carlson, you are up, sir. Um, by the way, I, uh, we have a plaque for you. It's just not done yet. So as soon as it's done, I can present to you like a imaginary plaque.
Okay. That'd be a good photo op.
Real thanks.
But seriously, public services is tough, and we appreciate you stepping up, and that plaque will recognize the public service that you've done as an alderman, not counting everything you've done in law enforcement and Police and Fire Commission and just as a citizen. So, thank you for everything.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Mayor. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I feel I owe the citizens of Stevens Point an explanation, as well as council members. Uh, I had a lot of soul searching to do, and I notified Merwiza at the end of September that I was, uh, made a decision to resign my aldermatic post in District 6. It was one of the hardest decisions that I've made in a long time, as I have served this community for over 44 years in one form or another, whether it's the Police Department, Police and Fire Commission, Justice Works, working with offenders, getting them rehabilitated back into the community. Uh, I believe in serving, and that's what made this really hard for me. Uh, recently, I was diagnosed with cancer of the pancreas, and currently I'm seeing doctors in both Madison and Stevens Point here, and it's because of this disease and the effects of the treatment that I cannot feel like, I feel like I can't serve the community with the energy and the passion that I need to have to do the job right. I'm committing myself to fighting this disease, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve, although it was a short time on the council, because I learned a lot. I enjoyed working with everybody. Sometimes views are a little different, but it was a good, good communications. I want to thank everyone for their support and the kind words that I've received since August, and it's been tremendous. And God willing, I look forward to someday serving this community once again. So, from my heart, I thank you all, and good luck with everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for your years and years and decades of generous service. Uh, if there's ever anything, of course, that we can do to help, just let us know, please. I'll be there. I'll be there tomorrow. Uh, let's see. Next up, Kevin Flatoff.
Kevin Flatoff, 2151 Ella Street, Stevens Point. Long time no see, people. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Ron Carlson, I've known you a long time. I love you very, very much. And you're gonna, you're gonna cream this. You're one of the most positive people I know. Everybody in Stevens Point loves you. Thank you for your friendship and your leadership. I'm not really prepared today. I wasn't gonna come, but I thought there was something that needed to be said. And uh, I don't think you're gonna like what I have to say. It's just something that's, that's happening in my life as a business owner, and the Stevens Point City Councils is directly related in a decision I have recently made. So, at the end of the month, I am closing on another business. We're expanding our operations for Flatoff Properties and Gold Key Motors. The hardest part about the whole thing is I love Stevens Point. I always have. But while looking uh, for this new opportunity, I have to be frank with you guys. I did not consider Stevens Point as an option for where I wanted to spend my money and expand my operations. And I'm a little more nervous than usual, because it pains me that I stepped outside of this community to buy another business. The relevance in this is, I hope you guys are paying a little attention to what possible repercussions some of your decisions as city council may have on the business community. There's 80 businesses up and down the Business 51 corridor. We have not seen any positive support or heard anything positive from the City of Stevens Point or the Common Council. All we've heard about is a two-lane road that you want to pursue that will definitely harm us. So my decision to, to build my business outside of Stevens Point was one that was tough, but it was fiscal. I had to make a decision that I thought would be best for Flatoff Properties and my family. I've been in talks with the business owner in Plover. I'm not gonna lie to you guys. Is it possible that Flat... that Gold Key Motors and Second Street Auto Clinic could end up in Plover? Absolutely. It hurts me to say that. But again, I have to look out what's best for my business. I love Stevens Point. I'm not turning my back on Stevens Point. I'm just making a business decision. I'm hoping as alderman of Stevens Point, who represent us, that you'll step back a little and consider some alternatives to the road, because I didn't see a redesign which was proposed by the mayor. I saw a meeting that was put forth, and the money to go towards a possible redesign disappeared. So, let's kind of look at that and hope we can retain some, some businesses. I know that you're looking at a committee or whatever it is to try and bring in new businesses into Stevens Point. What I hope you'll do is consider the 80 businesses that are already here before you look forward, because the other businesses that want to come in here are gonna see how you're treating the businesses that are here right now. And it's gonna be hard to get them in here. And one last thing real quick, this has nothing to do with anything other than my thoughts. If anybody out there from the WIAA is listening, I think you dropped the ball on the Amherst football program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Keith Kudrowski.
Good evening. Uh, Keith Kudrowski, 1536 Water Street. Ron, didn't expect to hear that before I came up here today. Kinda definitely got me shaking a little bit. Got to know you pretty well the last couple of years. Wonderful man. Served this community so many ways. So, so I still have to say what I gotta say. I did behave the other Thursday very well. I stayed on point. I will. I'll still be honest, though. Just want to recall, a couple of months ago, we had this discussion about people speaking. I remember one of the council members being very concerned about false information being spewed from this pulpit, and, you know, I guess I've never heard this person complain about the current White House Press Secretary, the last one, who spew lies continually. Or I never heard any mention from her when I received a call, Kevin received a call, from this Democrat Party member, Barbara Brewster, a couple of weeks before the referendum vote, spewing a lie that our taxes were gonna go up 40%. No construction projects would get passed. Total disaster. What is with the local Democrat Party? What is the hate for small business, for local businesses? Probably more so, I can't understand how people continue to vote for this party that is so anti-America. I mean, locally, statewide, federally, we have a dementia-ridden guy who's made so many horrible decisions. Inflation's at easily 20%. They say less. I like to see which thing's gone up less than 40%. That doesn't affect the rich people, the moderately rich people either. It hurts me a little. What it hurts is my friends who are on fixed income, and the marginalized people who supposedly the Democrats care so much about. Yet you crap on these poor people, because that inflation is a tax nobody can get away from. Elections are in a few weeks. St. Louis, Missouri, Baltimore, Maryland, New Orleans, Detroit, Cleveland, Las Vegas, Kansas City, Memphis, Newark, Chicago, Cincinnati, Philadelphia, Milwaukee. I'll stop at 13. Highest murder rates in the country. What do all these cities have in common? They've been run by Democrats for over 50 years, mayoral-y and city council. So, how do you people, how do people vote for this? How do you vote to shoot yourself in the foot continually? I could read the same list, and it's the same list, pretty much, of cities where it's the most dangerous for your chances of getting, being involved in a serious crime. One in 34 to one in 50. Milwaukee, again.
Keith, I need you to wrap it up, please.
All right. So I have to say, vote wisely. Elections have consequences.
Thank you. Next up, Dave Iden.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dave Iden, 1008 Matilda Street, Stevens Point. Um, I'm troubled and sorry to hear about your misfortune, Ron. You're a strong man, and I know you're gonna defeat this, and we all support you. And if I can help, let me know, please.
We're gonna pick up the leaves later, so...
I'll work on the sticks. Uh, nevertheless, I guess a couple of things come to mind, and I'll try and make it short. The bandshell. I mentioned the bandshell over a year ago. I noticed, just sitting there, enjoying the music, centerpiece of our community, which looks like it's crumbling. And I come to find out that structurally it is. I spoke with Dan, who was the city parks on the riverfront rendezvous. He explained to me that the roof blew off over winter. We tacked the roof back on at a cost of, I think he quoted, $10,000, which is apparently change. Nevertheless, explained to me the roof needs to be redone. I said, "Well, if you look at the structure, you can see where, if it was maintained, we probably wouldn't be in this situation." Troubles me to know that we don't seem to have a maintenance type of program within the city or the community that would address these things before we have to say, "Oh, we need $3 million to rebuild the bandshell, because we didn't keep it up." Okay, so, so that's troubling. I drive by there, I see probably five, six homeless people who are calling it their shelter now. Unfortunate for them. Uh, was at a recent Diversity Council meeting, we discussed some of these issues there also. Nevertheless, I'm curious to see what course of action we're taking to get this ready for next year, so it's completed by the 4th of July, hopefully sooner, and what the costs surrounding this, and how we can move forward in this regard to save the community money and to keep these types of things up, which we all look up to. Um, that being said, I'm curious to hear a little, some answers there down the road. Uh, the meeting that was held with ACOM, at what great expense, I don't know, just basically reinforced the fact that the city council seems intent on two-lane road, and that's, they gave us the safety reasons and the multimodal transport and, and some of the other reasons, which here, again, you guys aren't listening. Apparently, I know your mind's made up. So that's troubling in itself. Okay? You were angry about the referendum. I understand that, too. We're just trying to hold some accountability. It's not asking too much out of the people who represent us, or do they? Um, with that said, uh, I think I'll leave it at that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And Dave, we've got in tonight's capital budget about $200,000 to do repairs on the bandshell, among other things, so...
Is that structural, too? Does that only mention?
That's the glue lab and everything. We'll talk about that at capital if there's questions. Uh, next up, Craig Tesh.
Craig Tesh, 1100 Frotnack, uh, here in Stevens Point. Although I have a business on, uh, actually had a business, now I have a building on Church Street. And, uh, I wanted to talk about the October 6 meeting that we had. Uh, I actually showed up thinking that, uh, we're gonna have, it was a situation where you would be working with us. Instead, actually, I got treated to a sales meeting. And believe me, I've been a lot, to a lot of those before. People standing up, a person standing up in front, and they sell something. And when there's questions to be asked, the responses are designed to eliminate any misgivings you may have about the product. It's called, in the sales industry, it's called handling objections. And that's all that happened. There was no meeting of the minds there whatsoever. You talk about improving safety, but the chart that you showed shows our area was already safe. Uh, it was actually more north of Ella Street where it wasn't, wasn't as, it was a little more dangerous. Your question, another one, your question was, uh, do lane restrictions work? I don't know what "work" means, and it really wasn't explained to me. However, the first two examples you had, uh, North, uh, North Avenue and Locust Street. Now, I haven't lived Milwaukee in a very long time, but I can tell you that what I remember of it, that that doesn't compare to what we have on Church Street. Uh, your question, another question you had, do, on a chart, you said, "Do lane restrictions have detrimental traffic impacts?" And you compared it to Stanley Street. Uh, there's no comparison between Church Street and Stanley Street. There's a lot less businesses on Stanley Street. Uh, your evaluation criteria, um, I didn't see any effect on business listed there. All you had was, instead, you had something saying consistency with city plans. It sounded to me like everything was already set up with, with AECOM. I asked if there was a study as far as the effect on businesses. The person there talked about WASO. That's not a study. Um, also, in your comparison of your two-lane TWLTL with the four-lane versus the, with the raised medium and the bike lane, um, I had to disagree with some of the logic here. Cost was five versus one, right away, four versus one. Those are the first two criteria. I mean, already, we're down by seven before we even started. And then you had emergency services, five versus three. I didn't understand it, but of course, I wasn't thinking along the lines maybe of a raised medium. Um, and I gotta say this in closing. Um, I remember the guy in a red jacket, and I didn't agree with his verbiage, but I can tell you, his analysis was pretty much spot on.
Thanks, Craig. All right, that exhausts our speaker list. Next up, it's not on your agenda. Um, that's, that's my fault. I kind of slipped my mind a little bit, but we got information out today. We have a presentation from Darren Wasneski, who is the Associate State Director of AARP, right? And you will be talking to us about our recent accreditation as, as we strive towards being an age-friendly community. And... I am... Come on. Sharing is paused. Why is my pause? Hang on. Something's not right here. And there. There we go. Now, we're a little better. There we go. All right, take it away.
Are you gonna control this?
I will control it. You just give me a high sign or something. I, I got yelled at for using the laser pointer last time, so... But yeah, you can go up to the lectern, and then I'll, I'll do the clicking through.
Oh, right. Um, we can advance to the next slide, Mayor. Just a quick thank you, Mayor Wizza, members of council. Um, I'm Darren Wasneski, as the mayor said, with AARP Wisconsin, and, um, we are a staff of eight, based out of Madison. Uh, I have a counterpart, Amber, and she and I administer the network of age-friendly communities and do livable communities work around the state of Wisconsin on behalf of AARP and our almost 840,000 members here in the state. Um, next slide, please. Why livable communities? And this is just a quick introduction. In 2010, AARP conducted a survey of its 38 million members and found that the, most of the members wanted to live in their community and preferably in their homes as they got older. Um, what we recognize is most communities and most homes are not built for that. Um, they're built for an able-bodied 35-year-old, and if you fall outside of that perimeter, then you run into some trouble. So, we launched livable communities to prepare for this, and as you were seeing in 2010, the darker blue is the number of people who are 65 and older in the, the country. Next slide, please. And by 2020, it's getting even darker, and this is happening everywhere except for Utah, and I haven't quite figured out what that is all about.
It's the Azmonds.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and it's going, you know, projected to go even deeper. So we need to, to figure out this. By 2034, um, the number of people aged 65 will actually outnumber the number of people 18 and under in this, in this country. Um, and so we have to address this. Next slide, please. Um, so this is just, almost 80% of our members said they wanted to stay in their community. Next slide. And, and an increasingly aging population, they desire to age in place. Um, their housing is not suitable for aging in place, and we need to understand the housing cycle and life cycles. Um, almost, uh, the average typical American outlives their ability to drive by eight to 10 years. And so how do people stay connected in their community? Because we understand that it leads to social isolation. We don't want to go there. Next slide, please. Uh, and next slide, we can skip this. So, AARP focuses in its livable communities and age-friendly network on eight domains of livability. And we look at housing, access to outdoor spaces and public buildings, transportation, communication and information, civic participation and employment, respect and social inclusion, health services, and social participation. Next slide, we can go real quick. So, outdoor space and public buildings, these are our public spaces, our park spaces, um, the places for gathering, streets. How do we have access to them? Are these accessible for all ages and all abilities? Can people get to them? Next slide, please. Transportation, again, looking at all forms. Automobile, but what happens if we aren't able to drive, whether through legal means or medical means? How do people get around and stay connected in a community? Next slide, please. Housing, do we have, or are our communities have housing for people in all life stages? You know, we're seeing a glut. We have a, a talk in the state right now of the need for workforce housing, but we understand that most three- and four-bedroom homes have one or two-person households in them. Um, that's a mismatch in the size there. But there isn't for something, for somebody to go into in the communities. And so, we work with our communities to understand that, and how do we address that need? Next slide. Social participation, as we get older, we have a lot to offer for the community, and we want to say, how do we continue to offer that, either through employment or volunteering? Next slide. And respect, how do we treat everybody with respect, and how do we have intergenerational connectivity throughout all communities? Next slide. Civic participation, employment, other volunteer opportunities. Are people able to work as they need or as they want to work as they get older, um, or at any age in their community? Next slide. And communication, how are we getting information out to people? It is so hard these days to reach everybody, and we have to try to understand what are the best ways to, to reach people in getting that out. And community and health services, do we have access to, to health services in the community? Okay, next slide, please. Uh, next slide. Some of these were hidden. I think they got mismatched when, when I transferred the thing to you. Uh, these are just some of the resources that we offer the community on our website there. Next slide. Um, so what is the age-friendly network? Next slide. Um, when Stevens Point joined at the end of August, I believe, um, it was the 679th community, and so that is since 2012. In 2012, the first community was Macon Bibb, Georgia, and when AARP waded into this space, they thought that maybe they'd get 50 communities across the country who'd be interested in it. So Stevens Point was number 679. Today, we're at over 700. Um, so there are a lot of communities across the country. And so what that's saying is, you have a network of support around you, and we want to connect Stevens Point up to everybody else, including the other 11, uh, 10, other 10 communities in the state of Wisconsin. Next slide. Um, the benefits, AARP does not charge anything for this. Um, we're not going to try to sell the communities on anything. We really provide connection to others who are working on these matters, as well as providing training and technical assistance. Next slide. Um, what the membership does not include, being an age-friendly community is not a moniker like a tree city. It doesn't mean you have, uh, you know, a perfect place to retire. It means that you recognize that this is important to you as a community and through your planning, um, efforts. Uh, you're gonna look at the lens of age-friendly in all that you do in policy and planning. Um, and support from AARP Wisconsin, again, we're here to, to provide training and technical assistance and networking to the other communities. And, next slide. So, just a timeline on what this happens. So, by inclusion, it starts a ticker of five years, and that's the initial commitment. Um, again, there is no cost for this, but the first 18 months, we're gonna look at assessing the community needs. So there'll be a, um, survey that'll go out, there'll be community engagements, understand people's perceptions of livability in Stevens Point. And then we're gonna take the time, that information and what's already been gathered, um, through previous processes, and develop an action plan on how do we address, what are we seeing as the, the top few priorities? What is the community seeing, and what are we gonna do about it? Um, and then they're gonna take years three through five to implement the plan. We come back at the end, and we do an after-action report. What do we say we wanted to do? What are we able to do? Um, and is it working? Is this something we want to continue on? Is this something we want to continue on with? Um, inclusion there then becomes, as the mayor said it earlier, kind of on a month-to-month basis at that point. There's no other five-year commitment, but we'd love to have you onboard, or the community could say, this has been a fun ride, and we're gonna sign off from now. However you want to do it, there's no commitment beyond that. Next slide. Uh, so, and this is just, you know, some information as, as we go through, and it's, it's a cycle, and it's a process, and where they're to support you, um, along the way. So these are the other network members, uh, some of the earliest members, Greendale, Shorewood, and Sheboygan, um, and they have committed or on, or in process of working on a commitment, um, to continue in the network, although their five years is, has been up. Um, and so just this year, uh, Stevens Point was also joined by Appleton and Waukesha. So, um, we've got a...
Waukosa.
Waukosa, thank you. One of those WA cities.
Waukosa.
So, thank you, um, for the time, uh, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Darren, thank you very much. Um, for those of you who are watching and maybe hearing about this for the first time, this is something that, uh, Adam Kuhn, our, uh, zoning administrator, and Ryan Krasinski, our community development director, myself, have been working on. Council, as you know, approved, uh, becoming a member, so the next steps are going to be, as Darren said, uh, we're getting a survey out to the public to kind of get a sense of where we are, a baseline, if you will, and then we're gonna be putting together an ad hoc committee to go over not only the results, but offer recommendations on how we might improve our, uh, our age-friendliness in the community. And that doesn't mean it's just for people who are older. Um, as Darren pointed out earlier today in one of our meetings, uh, you know, age-friendly is really friendly for all ages, uh, and we're gonna work on that and work towards our goal over the next 18 months and implement some of this stuff. So, if you are interested in serving on that ad hoc committee, uh, write yourself a cover letter, paragraph or two, uh, with your experience and why you're interested, submit it through my office, and, uh, and we'll put that in for consideration. Darren, thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years.
Thank you, likewise.
Uh, sure.
Any opportunity for questions?
We actually don't usually do, as you know, offer question-and-answer sessions for presentations. If you need something, if you want to ask a question, go ahead and get up to the lectern and ask your question, um, but normally for presentations, it's, it's just a presentation.
I appreciate it.
Well, he's, either that or while he's walking up.
My question related to, I'm sorry, Mr. Iden. Is this independent of the work that ADRC is doing?
Yes.
Okay, but, and you're gonna blend those?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Iden.
Yeah, not just the ADRC, but we've got stakeholders, uh, kinda lined up already.
Dave Iden, uh, it begs a, a few questions, I guess. Is there any public funding that supports your group? Federal, statewide, local? Um, I guess, that's just one of the first things that comes to mind. Uh, you said there was no cost to, was it the citizens or the town? Is that correct?
No cost to the city.
No cost to the city?
Right.
Okay, do you receive public funds from any, any entity? Federal, state, local?
For tho, for those of you listening and, and maybe not being able to see, um, Darren shaking his head, no. Most of that comes through your memberships, right?
Right, I mean, for this program, absolutely not. You know, we will, our AARP Tax Aid Program...
I gotta get you up to the microphone, though, because that's the only way we can hear you online.
Yeah, for the AARP livable communities, there are no, to my knowledge, there are no public funds, um, that are using this. It all is through the, um, enterprise funds through AARP, through our membership and services, um, for the livable communities program.
Thanks, Darren.
And I guess, uh, another thing that does come to mind then is, uh, is there any binding of any decisions that are made through the committee?
Nope.
On the city from AARP?
Nope.
Or vice versa?
It's an ad hoc advisory committee only.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave. Alrighty, I am gonna stop the share. Uh, thank you very much, Darren, and we'll talk soon. All right, uh, item number five is our consent agenda. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent as, agenda, seconded by Dalton. Hearing and seeing none, all, uh, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Christensen.
Aye.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zara Zua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
And that is approved. Um, I should go back and say, I feel compelled to do this, because we typically don't do question and answers during the presentations, only because it can take up an awful lot of time. We ask that the questions be done offline afterwards, um, but we have made exceptions. Obviously, tonight was one of those exceptions, but...
But for good questions, though.
Gen, yes, absolutely. Generally, the, the presentation is just that. All right, item number six is a resolution. That's a request from Daniel and Danielle Hopala, representing Hopala Investments LLC for a conditional use permit to renovate an existing commercial tenant space into a single-family residence on the property located at 2964 Church Street, parcel identified in your packet, consistent with chapter 23.02, sub 1, sub G, sub 16, sub F. It said, gone through the plant commission. Alder Fishler.
I'll move approval.
I second.
Seconded by Alder Person Morrow, discussion there. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Here.
Yeah, yes or no, please. Dean?
Yes, aye.
There you go, thanks.
Niebon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zara Zua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. I know it's probably, you're probably beat to go get out, Dean, and, uh, we appreciate you beating me.
It's good, yeah, and I'm an hour ahead of you guys, too.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. All right, um, item number seven is the, uh, one of the amendments for the development agreement between the City of Stevens Point and R.A. Cook and J.L. Lambert Cooperative.
Motion to approve.
Motion by President Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Person Morrow, discussion there.
I'll be abstaining due to a conflict with Alder Keemer.
Okay, Alder Keemer will be marked as abstaining, and, uh, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer's abstained. Zara Zua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number eight is a request for merge urban development for a partial assignment of amended and restated development agreement for Phase III of the Northside Yard Development at 1017 Third Street.
May I make a motion to approve, please?
Motion by Morrow.
Second.
I'm sorry, oh, second by Christensen. Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zara Zua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Uh, some exciting ones coming up, uh, looking forward to these. Well, nine is a request from the Community Development Department to contract with Place Dynamics for a business incubator feasibility study.
Moving to roll.
Motion by Niebon. Seconded by Shore. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zara Zua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10 is a request from the Community Development Department to contract with Arizona Associates for architectural services relating to a business incubator.
Motion to approve, please.
Motion by President Johnson.
Second.
Uh, we'll give the second to Dalton.
Okay.
Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zara Zua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Uh, some exciting ones coming up, uh, looking forward to these. Well, nine is a request from the Community Development Department to contract with Place Dynamics for a business incubator feasibility study.
Moving to roll.
Motion by Niebon. Seconded by Shore. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zara Zua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10 is a request from the Community Development Department to contract with Arizona Associates for architectural services relating to a business incubator.
Motion to approve, please.
Motion by President Johnson.
Second.
Uh, we'll give the second to Dalton.
Okay.
Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 11, arguably one of the most exciting things on our agenda tonight, is an update on, and some possible action on some healthcare benefit changes. Uh, Sandy, did you wanna give us a brief overview or go over anything in your, uh, yours and Cory's memo?
Hi, Sandy Fraas, HR Manager. Uh, just wanted to, um, bring to you from our last Personnel Committee meeting, um, we didn't have, uh, definite, um, details of the tiers and the plans. We do have that today, and we do have, um, um, if you have any questions on, uh, the plan specifically, we do have, um, our, uh, M3 broker, um, Cory Palmer, here to, uh, help answer any questions you may have. And so, the first is, given changes in any of the local healthcare markets, we did, um, need to make a change to the third-party administrator, and, um, the plan isn't changing, um, and, but the cha, the changing people administering the, it may result in various changes to employees. Um, we were first, um, we had a first estimate that we wanted to share with you. We were given, um, a 27% increase, um, that would have a, uh, uh, impact on our budget, budget, but we are now looking at a 14% increase, as you see in Cory's, um, memo, uh, which would be more manageable. And, um, the second would be the restructuring of the premiums to add children, employee-plus children, or child and children, and employee-plus spouse. Um, these two options are just going to be able to, um, manage the, the tiers and, um, adjust it so that, uh, the structure is, uh, fairly, um, uh, to, to help, like, single parents. And, um, just to let you know, though, on the back, um, it just discusses the monthly health premium adjustment. So, the new premium structure that we're looking for is, um, single, uh, that's what we currently have. We're looking for employee-plus spouse, uh, employee-plus child or children, and then we currently have the family plan. Does anybody have questions on the memo or anything that we propose we'd like to change?
Thanks, Sandy. Yeah, basically, the, the big things to note, um, are, we're adding some tiers rather than what we have right now is either single or family. Um, and we have single parents, uh, people with, married couples with no children, so adding the employee-plus spouse or employee-plus children or child, um, is actually saving them some premium, uh, as opposed to the family plan. So, I think this will be a benefit at least for some of those employees.
Was this, was, was this a higher increase than what you, than what this, than what everybody thought it was going to end up being? I know healthcare always goes up, but was, but was this a higher in, increase than what this, than what the actual was planned or thought was gonna happen?
So with the changes overall, it's actually, um, it's less of an increase than we had originally projected. So by adding those tiers, um, the structure changes a little bit, and then the administrator, um, services also reduce, it's not a reduction, it's, it's less expensive than we thought it was gonna be. Does that make sense?
I guess I know with, like, you have single and families, so that's, so if someone who has one, one kid or five kids.
Right.[1454.82]
But it seems like a traditional family is subsidizing all the other ones. Yes, if you would, please.
Absolutely, please.
Hi, I'm Cory Palmer from M3 Insurance. We're working with the city on the benefits plan. So a couple of things to, to keep in mind, the health plan for the city is currently self-funded. So it's not a fully insured, where insurance company is saying this is what your premium increases this year. What we do is throughout the year, we're watching the budget. To your question earlier, we, we knew that there was increases coming throughout the year. Claims have been up the last few years, much higher this past 12 months. So we knew there was gonna be some restructuring to take place. But to your point about the tiering and the subsidization, when you think about it, we're looking at your total plan costs. So claims that we're anticipating based on the past few claims, inflationary increases, what you have to pay for your administration of your plan, claims payment, things like that. So we come up with a total dollar of what that estimated cost is that you need to fund for, for 2023. So when you take that number, that doesn't change whether you have four tiers or two tiers, it's just how it's allocated up. So when you look at that, it is correct that the family has to go up if we're gonna have lower costs for those new two middle tiers. So there's some, there's some risk factoring that goes into that. But they're really looking at it saying the single should stay about the same as where it's at today, because you're still only covering one person. But now, not everyone's in the full family, and those lower cost employee plus spouse tiers, and the employee plus just children, because they are lower cost, it does raise the rate then for those that would be on full family. So not really a subsidization, but it does feel that way because of how it's spread out. So there would be an increase more to that family plan with that reduction, but it's the only way, because you still have the total funding cost that you need to budget for.
And do we have an estimate of how many families we have that this is going to impact?
Did you? I was gonna say, we did have those numbers. I don't remember who had them earlier.
Yeah, because that's a big jump for them.
They pay 10%.
I did a quick run-through on the numbers today, and what I came up with was 46 single, 20 employee and spouse, eight employee and children, and 65 family.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Lisa?
It's just, it's a big increase for families, and, and I understand the employ, you know, employee plus spouse, because my employer's had it for a decade or more. And it makes sense, it's just for families, this is, and even though they pay 10%, I understand that. 65 families are gonna have a pretty big hit, so.
I also did calculate out how much per payday.
Okay, thank you.
So for a single, they would pay an extra $10.60 a month, and this is divided, you know, by 12, and then 24 pay periods a month. The employee plus spouse is going down $13 a month. The employee plus child or children is going down $30.20 a month. And the family plan is going up $55.80 a month, which is about $28 a payday.
Thank you for doing all the math.
Yeah, we've been going over the numbers pretty feverishly over the last couple of weeks. Anything else, President Johnson? Okay?
No.
Alder Shore?
Thanks. Well, sort of responsive to that, and echoing what's been said in a slightly different way. Yes, there's this change that's gonna be felt in people's paychecks. The other way I look at it is that with everyone lumped into that single category, the households with the largest risk have been subsidizing the, those with the lesser risk, you know, up until the point that we're doing this. So.
Good point.
Any other comments or questions?
Just real quick, the first sentence of Comptroller Lattic's memo states that this is, these are changes related to the self-insured health plan. Is this a subset of the city's health plan? Or this is the entire?
Yeah, we are self-insured.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Items number 12 and 13, I had gotten a memo from Comptroller Treasurer Lattic. He's not able to join us this evening, but he just said these, we're talking about wages and salaries for all the persons and other electeds. It says, "I believe it's important that we do our best to stay current with inflation and with comparable communities, so I am supportive of reasonable increases to the salaries for all categories of employees." And the first one we're gonna be considering is setting the alderperson salary for the terms beginning in 2023 and 2024. There was a memo also in your packet from Alderman Shore in regards to a proposal that was, we talked about last week a little bit. Alder Shore, did you wanna talk about this at all?
Sure. In effect, the question sort of was divided, right? Because the other elected positions the committee approved, and then I volunteered to take a look at this, disclosing that I saw a reason for, for a significant increase, and this, this memo assessed that out. So I proposed a $1,000 raise to $6,300, and the two key, well, three key points. I ran some comparables on the basis of population size, and, and that came out slightly higher than what I recommended, and the memo details that. It also gives the history, which is that long periods of time go in between this council increasing the alderperson's salary. It has been six, no, actually, seven years, because that took effect, the last increase took effect in 16, but it was decided in 15. So it's been seven years, and prior to that, uh, okay, I've got a wrong date in there. It went a decade, give or take, let's just say that. And my expectation is that after a significant increase, you know, this is, I'm proposing this as a one-time deal, expect, with the expectation, it's gonna be a while until it's done again. Finally, the real reason I think it's important to do this is that I think it's fair to say that most everybody, if not everybody, currently serving on the council, the financial consideration, the compensation is not a big consideration. We, you know, we, the money is not a big part of why we do this, and of course, it's public service, and for anyone, there's gonna be that desire to serve. But I think what we need to bear in mind is, when you keep it low, anyone out there who is deciding whether to run, the people for whom it does matter, people who, you know, are not as financially comfortable, are going to, you know, not give it as much consideration. And I think we do have an interest in, in attracting people across, you know, a wider socioeconomic range, and so that's why I, oh, I should, I'm sorry, I should have moved approval for the purpose of discussion, so.
I, I think we're okay doing it, because there, there's some numbers that we have to hash out here, so.
Oh, and sorry, yes, and there's, and the last piece is that from a budget standpoint, I did, with the deputy comptroller's help, take a look at some of the accounts that have been discussed, and I think that approximately one-third of the $11,000 impact can be found within those budget lines.
Okay, and, and normally, yes, Robert rules, Robert's rules would require you to have a motion on the floor to bring it forward. I'm not a big proponent of that, because I don't think that the body can necessarily decide what they wanna do.
But we might wanna take it with this before.
This one in particular, because when I was reading through the memo, it was difficult for me to grasp where the numbers were coming from. So we went through them again, I went through them with Carrie this afternoon. You would be setting the salary for future councils.
Correct.
So starting in 2023, which would be the outnumbered seats, that would go up to $6,000 annually for those six seats. The other five seats.
63.
Say again?
Well, from.
I'm sorry, 63, yes, 63.
Yes.
So my numbers are gonna be off too, because I rounded. So 63 times the six would give you, right? You see where I'm going with this now? And so the five alderpersons who were elected in 2022 would still be at the $5,300 until their seats get re-elected in 2024. So the, the piece is actually smaller, and Cory wanted me to point out too, I asked the numbers, if we were to take this money and, and put it all towards non-elected employee compensation, it, it would very likely not even make a dent. 1%, a 1% increase for our non-elected employees comes to about $75,000. And we're talking, well, let's see.
I thought it was 11,000, but you pointed out.
Right, it's not. It's actually a little less.
It's not.
So the current salary for those six alderpersons would increase by about 7% for those elected in 2023, and then there's an additional amount, about 8%, that would be for 2024. So with the levy limits allowing us to increase spending by 2.52%, and that's what we're proposing for the employees, maybe a little bit more if we could find some money somewhere, reducing your miscellaneous line item, which is currently at $5,700, reducing that to 2,200 would cover that $3,500 that you mentioned in your memo, of about 4,100 that was needed in 2023. And then in 2024, we'd have to figure out where that additional amount would be coming from, either through travel, miscellaneous, or your educational line items. But if you recall also, and I'm not sure if you were on, but the last time we talked about an increase, the alderpersons didn't want a salary increase, they actually wanted that equivalent put into miscellaneous.
That was in 15.
For doing things like mailers and, and things like that. So I, I would urge caution when cutting through some of the line items, but if you can see in the 2022 budget, they weren't, they weren't heavily used. None of them are heavily used yet, so I think you would still be okay.
No.
It's just we would have to modify the ordinance proposal to reflect $6,300 for those seats elected in 2023, and then six, if that was your wish, $6,300 for those seats elected in 2024, it would be staggered.
Of course, obviously, and thank you for, for straightening that out. And of the three lines, it was fairly clear that there's not room in the education line, that that's, it's modest as it is, not really room to cut there. So if the budget is only, so the salaries are staggered, so then how could the, the part, the budget, budget cut part potentially also be staggered, not, not moving 3,500, right? This time, but likewise, only doing half of that.
Okay.
Right.
And we could, we could certainly do that. We could absorb the 2.52% in our standard increase, and take the difference, now I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but take the difference of that 7% increase out of one of the line items, I would recommend miscellaneous, because that has the most leeway in it.
So instead of 3,500, 2,000?
Uh, not quite. Carrie, you got that?
It's about 600 each for each of the six people, so it'd be about 3,600.
Really, isn't that really part of the budget discussion? When we start pulling out of general ledger categories, that's a budget discussion, in my opinion. Right now, we're just trying, instead of trying to assign the money, we need to set the salaries. There's two different discussions, in my, in my.
Well, so what we need is, we need that decision tonight, so we can formulate a budget presentation.
Correct.
So we're looking for options on where the money can come from as well. We could dump it all on Cory and Carrie, they figured it out. No, that's, that's, that's an option.
That's what.
We can do that, I mean, that's, that is their job.
But it seems, in line with what is proposed here, it seems like taking 2,000 from miscellaneous rather than the entire 3,500 would align with that idea of covering the odds, and then the evens, even-numbered seats come the following year.
Sure, and, and that does not need to be part of the motion. We, we've conveyed that, and we'll, we'll figure out where to, to get everything. We just wanna, we don't wanna take it out of something that the council's going to object to next week. Right? So we're looking for those ideas, too. So the motion, if whoever would be, wants to formulate this, would be setting the salary for alderpersons elected in 2023 to X. And if you wanna set 24, you can do that, you don't have to.
Well, I, I would like to. So I move that we set salaries for 2023 elected alders and 2024 elected alders at $6,300.
Okay. We have a second?
This might be how unpopular it is to do this.
I will second just to bring it to discussion.
Okay, so, we have a second. Now we can discuss the proposal. Yes?
I really do appreciate, you know, the thought that went behind, you know, and I, I do agree with your, your statement that if other people are gonna run for alder, and they aren't maybe as, you know, have as much flexibility financially to do that, it does make sense. I am just leery because of the fact that right now we have inflation, people are trying to figure out how to pay for groceries, trying to pay their bills. I just don't feel like now is the right time to increase that amount. Just my thoughts.
Yes.
I have a, I have a legal question for Attorney Beverage, if he is here.
Okay.
And I think, like Alder, Fishler, I appreciate the work that went into this, and I see this as, you know, and, and a deserving adjustment, given comparable communities. I just don't feel comfortable making this decision for the council. And I guess I'm just wondering, Attorney Beverage, given state statute, is it required that council be the one to approve mayor and council salaries? Or is it, I know other cities have a commission that makes those decisions, and I'm just wondering if it's required that council do this, or if there's an alternative?
I mean, yes, it's required. I would expect, I haven't, I certainly am not familiar with the exact details of what you're referring to in terms of a commission function in, in other cities, but I suspect that it might be that there is a commission that is making recommendations that ultimately then have to go to the council, as opposed to it sort of starting and ending with the council.
Sure.
But ultimately, yes, you do need to be the ones to, to act on this, the same as you do for, you know, setting the salaries of any other staff members in the city.
Budget decisions, okay.
So the salaries are set by ordinance, but.
Yeah.
It's important to note that the perception of you giving yourself a raise, that's not it at all. It will not take effect until the next election cycle.
Sure.
So you're not voting yourself a raise.
Sure.
You are voting whoever is the next alderperson. And that might be you, but you don't know that. And that's why the state statute requires us to set these, as we talked about at personnel, we set these so we can budget for them prior to the beginning of the election cycle, so there's no conflicts on any, any of this stuff.
I guess what I'm wondering is, I know there is, you know, they have the consultants come in who assess city salaries and say, you know, this is, and, and look at comparable positions in other communities, or what people in those same professions are making outside of government, and say, we think this is, you know, how your salary should be adjusted for your employees. If there's a way that those consultants could do that for elected officials, it seems like it would be useful, or if the special personnel committee that's chaired by the comptroller's office and the head of personnel could make recommendations to council on what those salaries would be, I think there would be at least, you know, a, a presentation of, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is.
Objectivity?
Yes, objectivity, thank you.
Yes, to be fair.
It's, it's my word of the day.
That, it's, you know, that we are approving recommendations that are coming from people who know the budget, who know, you know, instead of us making suggestions on what we're gonna get paid. So just for future, if that's something we could consider, I don't know, for next year or, you know, two years from now, that if, yeah, if, if those proposals could come from outside council for us to approve, I would feel more comfortable.
That makes a lot of sense. As Logan said, too, anybody can return their salary.
Sure.
So the reason behind this, so it's, it's been in the mayor's seat for as long as I can remember, to make the recommendations. Comptroller's also elected, so.
Sure.
All of those seats. What we've done in, in the past, and what I did with the, the memos this month, we're taking the same comparables that Baker Tilly uses for all of our other employees. Using those comparables, public information on what the council is making, what the comptroller's making, what the city attorney's making, that the clerk is making, and so on. So rather than pay someone to do it, we just do it in-house, and, and save a few bucks, but we could certainly have Baker Tilly, you know, use those comparables to provide a recommendation next time. It, it won't be any different, because we use, again, the same comparables. The only comparables that were different were Alder Shore's proposal, but the comparables that we used for both the alderperson's salary, the mayor's salary this year, and previously the city attorney, the city clerk, and the comptroller treasurer, all use the same comparables that all of our employees use. So we'll just see about getting it done that way next time. Seems a little more objective.
There we go.
We'll go to Shore, and then Christensen.
Shore.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did it the other way around.
He just shortened it from Sean Morrow to Shore.
That's what it was. Sean, and then Alder Christensen.
My comment would be like, if we had a consultant come in, I mean, that would cost a lot of money.
It would cost some. I don't know what it would cost, we actually didn't check.
I mean, but it would cost more money than what.
Our raise would be.
What is like even being asked. And I, and I kinda get both sides of it. I mean, like, I know the last time this, this came up, a, a comment was made, like, trying to get more folks involved who may not have, who may not have the time, might have to worry about child, childcare time, and so on, because oftentimes the person, I mean, oftentimes the folks that, that you see who do run have the means, have the time, and don't really represent a lot of the city that we have, because they just don't have the time, effort, and so on. And to stress again, this would be to, for the folks who come after us in the next, next election, even though it's often portrayed as we're giving ourselves a raise. And that's not really it. So I know, I was on, I was on the council the last, the last time, and that was back in 2016, 2017, too, and then it'd be like 10 years more, so. As I said, I'm kinda conflicted about it, but I, but I can see for other future councils, it might be helpful to, to help recruit some more folks from more diverse areas.
Thank you. Alder Christensen?
As a former school superintendent, we had to deal with this on an ongoing basis, and it was tough, and it was always challenging for school boards for the same exact reasons to, to vote themselves an increase, and theirs were incredibly low. I think the board president was getting $1,200, and the other members were getting like 800 for the year. I mean, it was, and I tried to convince them to, you know, they, they needed to move it up, and again, their thoughts were, obviously, we're not doing this for the money, and if you were, you should have your math checked. But I am a little concerned, just because we're, we're now in that post Act 10 period, and ever since Act 10, when you go into negotiations, if you offer the cost of living, there basically is no negotiations, and I, I was part of that whole process, and we tried to do that to the greatest extent possible. I am concerned that it would make, because we're not, obviously, not planning on offering the cost of living this year to the employees. So we are going to be involved in negotiations this year for the first time in a long time. That creates a little bit of a different situation than what we've been dealing with in the recent past. And I. And I, I fully understand the rationale and I think the facts are there. There's good justification for those increases. But I also think that timing makes it really challenging right now. I think it's going to make negotiations much more contentious when we're telling them, you can only have 2.5%, but we can all get 7%. I'm not sure, I think it's the right thing to do. I'm not sure this is the right time to do it.
Thank you. We'll go to Zarazua and then Johnson.
I hate this topic.
I know. It's one of those things that it's very uncomfortable, but we have to do it. And the thing to keep in mind is you're not, you're not doing it for yourself. You're doing it for the position. And, and that's what you have to consider.
But even in, like, in my day job, I don't have any say in what the person after me will get paid. It's just a really strange system we have here. I think the perception piece is important. Whether it's fair or not, I, I do think people are not going to say, oh, but there hasn't been an alderperson raised for how many years. I mean, people are looking at it here and now and what we're going through and what they're going through. And I think that that does just provides, gives some more like negativity to our roles. I very strongly believe in the equity argument and saying that someone who needs us as a job, you know, to some degree, would not be able to do it. I often share that only one month in my couple of years of being an alder, I kept track of how many hours I spent between attending meetings, watching meetings, reading agendas. Tonight's agenda is 308 pages, if anyone's wondering. And I divided it out and it came out to $1 per hour. So for anyone that thinks that we're making a lot of money, we're not. And so when I think about a person, if this was something that they were really passionate about, but they didn't have a lot of time to devote to it, like financially, it wouldn't be feasible. And we don't want to exclude anyone from being a part of our democracy. But it's just too weird of a concept to say, like, this position should be paid more, even though it's, even if it's true. I don't know. It just, it doesn't feel like the right time. But I, all of it, I just go back and forth. Like, also thinking about the fact, though, that we know how hard this decision is and we aren't going to, like, review this every year. Like, we're not going to, like, we will have the same difficult discussion if it's some of us still here in 2025 and, or for the 2025 budget and 2026. Like, it's just, do we just continue, like, not increasing it because it's a hard discussion? I don't know. I still don't know. I still don't know where I stand and I know we have to vote today, but.
The alderperson's salaries are set by ordinance, so even though we're setting it for 23 and 24, we can talk about it again next year if anybody wants to bring it up. It's usually because they're such difficult discussions that it's, it's uncomfortable enough where we're making a decision far enough out where you can kind of detach yourself from it. Keep in mind, we're talking about less than $11,000 here right now. Okay, we're, we're I bet we'll have less discussion on a 20, nine and a half million dollar budget and a 22 million dollar budget. So it, it's good that we're talking about it because it's important that we know this. But being an advocate, if you will, I know your job. And you would have the same thoughts for any other employee because you are an employee of the city. You are an employee of the people of Stevens Point. And the job is not easy. What I had proposed was 2%, which is less than what we're giving the employees. The 2% was, it was way less than $11,000. But regardless, it's, it's nominal, but the principle is there. So I appreciate all of the concern. President Johnson.
Thank you and thanks for the discussion. I'm not uncomfortable making a decision about wages. I guess I've been at this for like eight years now, but, and maybe that's too long. I've said this before and I'll say it again. I am opposed to increases for elected officials because literally you don't have to show up at all. There's no qualifications, other than 18 years of age or older, no felony convictions living in the jurisdiction. It doesn't say you must work 7 to 5 or 8 to 4 or work 40 hours a week. It just says 18 years of age or older, no felony convictions living in the jurisdiction. I have always voted against elected official pay increase for that reason. The added reason this year is we will not be able to increase according to inflation our employees' pay. And while that's a tangential issue, the fact that we will not be doing it means our entire pay plan is blown out of the water. And it means that we really will have to start from scrap and try to figure out how to evaluate how best to pay our professional staff and our working class staff. So I will be voting against any increases and continue my eight years of voting against increases in pay for elected officials. If, the question is, we want to engage more people and perhaps, as, as Alder Morrow had said, they can't afford childcare. Let's figure that out. If that's a barrier, maybe we should provide a subsidy for childcare so that more people can become engaged in the democratic process. If the issue is transportation, maybe we should explore how best to meet that barrier. So instead of assuming that these barriers exist, we should probably find out and try to find ways to address those barriers. Again, I've said it for eight years, I'll say it again, I will vote against increases in elected official pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Yes, elected official who has a requirement. You got to be certified to practice law, right?
Doctor of chiropractic.
Close enough. Holiday Inn Express.
There is one way that you could increase aldermanic salaries without increasing the line item. You could explore a lesser amount of council members.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily think that's an option that's going to be appealing to anyone, but it is
Rock, paper, scissors?
It is possible, so.
I think that's what
That's a good, yeah, that's an interesting idea. They did it county board. They went from 29 to 25.
It gets very, very complicated.
Sure.
My apologies. Opening the door to that.
So we'll have to consider the clerk's salary again. Anyone else for the first time?
But don't you only redistrict once every 10 years?
Well, if we chose to reduce
Yeah.
If we chose to reduce the number of council members, we would have to redistrict, period.
Let's, let's be clear, this is an idea that occurred to me just now. I have no idea what it would take.
Alder Niebohn.
And we're paying him for the
It might cost more money for the redistricting.
I'm on a fixed income. I'm not sure how many other retired people there are here. And I definitely could, could, yes, you soon, very soon. You'll, and I, although I would love to have an increase, I, I just can't support it. I think now, I didn't think we, I didn't realize this job even paid when I, when I first turned in my papers. I was going to do this for the sake of public service and the good of the community. So the, the money was like lanyap. It's like, yay.
Well, as Logan said
I get some money for this. Wow.
Anyone could turn their salary back in.
This is amazing. No, there'd probably be too much paperwork, right?
There'd probably be more paperwork than it's worth.
I don't, I don't need the money. I mean, and, and it doesn't sound like much, but it could be turnout gear for a firefighter. It could be something to save a cop's life. It could be playground equipment at a park. It could be something other than, you know, giving me an extra 20 or 30 or 40 bucks a month that I don't really need. So I'm a no vote. And again, I, I agree with President Johnson. I, I think that I do this because I feel I can bring something to the community, not because I get paid to come here several Mondays a month and, and other things. So I don't think we need an increase. So anyway, that's it.
That actually brought up a, a pretty good point that I don't know if I stressed enough. Because your salaries for all of the electeds are set by ordinance, you must take some action to either keep it the same, increase it, decrease it, but action must be taken. So that, that's true on any of the salaries for electeds.
Let's call a question then?
Pardon?
Oh, would I call a question for the vote?
Well, we've got Alder Shore that wants to talk. I just wanted to make sure everybody had at least the first time go around and then we'll go back to second. So anybody else for the first time? Okay, Alder Shore.
Thank you. So we, we could look at specific situations in terms of childcare or transportation, but you know, this is at the same time that generally the thinking about universal basic income is cash, money, right, rather than, on the compensation side, rather than sort of fine tuned benefits. I don't do this for the money either, but I'm also aware of the privilege of being in that position is the essence of the argument I'm making. The, if we really are going to take inflation into account and sort of what's happened to the council's salary under inflation, I probably should have put this in the memo, but I did just run these numbers through. So for the 2006 level, inflation adjusted would be $6,800. For the 2016 level, inflation adjusted would be $6,500. And here's the point. During those prolonged periods, there's been no inflation adjustment. So I'll make one final point that's, well, if we don't do this, we'll be proving that the pattern holds, right? We're just going to, you know, people don't like to do this and I won't take it personally because, you know, just people don't like to do this. As a more rhetorical point, this is the council that I think takes a lot of pride in, you know, tackling and taking on and getting resolution of some, some things that have kind of been stuck and, you know, and we've been able to shake loose or move forward. But obviously very serious about that point in terms of the privilege of the money not mattering and, and offering something that, that might have more appeal to those for whom money is a greater concern. With that, let's vote.
All right. So the motion before you is to increase the aldermatic salary to $6,300 a year, beginning in, for those alders elected in 2023 and the same increase for those alders elected in 2024. None of the current sitting alderpersons would be benefited in any way by any increase, this one included. If you are in favor of that motion, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
No.
Fischler.
No.
Dalton.
No.
Shuda.
No.
Niebohn.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Zarazua.
No.
Keemer.
No.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
I think they're on 10 to 1.
That, that, that motion fails.
9 to 1.
Okay.
9 to 1.
Make a motion.
Yes. President Johnson?
I would like to make a motion to freeze the alder, alder salaries for the 2023, 2024.
Okay, so the current alderperson's salary for 2023 is already set for an increase to 20, it's, it's 5,300 right now. The ordinance that was passed last time, whenever that was, sets it to 5,400. So there's a small increase already set. Are you suggesting that it stay at 5,300 for '23 and '24?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion before you is to set the aldermatic salary at $5,300 for those elected in 2023 and also $5,300 for those elected in 2024. Discussion on that motion. Go to Dalton.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, I thought I was seconded. Sorry, seconded by Dalton. Christensen? Okay, any discussion there?
I just think at this point, when you take a look at the big picture and you realize that we're going to be entering into negotiations this year, I just think it's a prudent thing to do. Like I said, I'm, I'm not necess, I'm not against an increase in principle. So I disagree slightly with President Johnson on that, but I just think that when you take a look at everything in its entirety, I think it would put the city in a difficult position and I think it would also put us in a challenging position as well.
Okay. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no and the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
No.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
No.
And that motion passes. Carrie, you've got some numbers to work with now. Actually is, should take us down a little bit in 2023. Okay, and that is concluded. Item number 13 is the ordinance amendment for the mayoral salary for the term 2023 through 2027.
For the same reasons, I'd like to make a motion to freeze the mayoral salary at its current term, or current amount, excuse me.
Okay. The motion is to freeze it for four years.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dalton. Discussion there?
Same rationale, just when you take a look at the political picture in its entirety, I just think the community would not be well-served with an increase.
Yeah, and, and I'm completely understanding that. Just keep in mind, you're, you're forecasting four years out. We don't even have labor contracts that go four years. So, okay. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
No.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
No.
Christensen.
Aye.
Need to? That motion passes and the mayoral salary will be frozen for the term of 2023 through 2027. Item number 14 is on page 101 of your packet and that is a request for a street closing for the holiday Christmas parade on November 16th. That is a recurring event. Moved by Christensen.
Second.
I saw hand up and then backed down again.
Everybody wants to go to the parade.
Seconded by Fischler. That's okay. I'd rather have more than nobody. That awkward silence with the motion of the second is, is, yeah. All right, we have motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes?
Just a comment that it's on Wednesday, November 16th.
It is on Wednesday, November 16th, yes.
Even the deer hunting families can attend.
Well, that's CCD night.
It is CCD night.
Yeah, there's, there's no good night where everyone's available. But we plan it far enough in advance where people can make arrangements and prioritize their lives. Okay.
Who did you take for a second?
Uh, Fischler. It was funny because both of it, they hit up and then it went down again. By the time I turned here, I'm like, wait, what's going on? All right, we got it. Did we do a roll call? No. Roll call, please.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 15 is request authorizing the forestry department to apply for the 2023 Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant.
So moved.
That was weird looking.
Keemer, I'll second.
Seconded by Keemer. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Director Kramer, I would ask in the future that rather than say all those words, if they could come up with a catchy acronym, that would be helpful. Item number 16 is an ordinance amendment in regards to Chapter 11, our forestry ordinance updates. So moved. Moves.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dalton. I'm gonna get whiplash here. Discussion? Nobody has any questions.
Thank you. There's quite a bit here. I just wanted to summarize. There's two major components of this rewrite. So first off, I should mention 1999 is the last time we went top to bottom on it. So Todd's been here a long time, does a great job, but he said it's really due. But the two primary things, other than cleaning up some of the language, is there's always been some discussion on can the forester enter private property? So we worked with the city attorney when we're working on nuisances or issues with tree health on private property. This just states that we would provide notice in writing seven days, then the forester could enter that property. The second item is, we do run into instances where the road is reconstructed and the tree bank is not big enough for trees. We've historically never been able to work with the private property owner when it's advantageous for the city to have trees on that area on private property. So Alder Shore actually worked with us on this for some time in the last 12 months or so talking about it. This ordinance rewrite talks about when the city forester determines that it's beneficial for the city, the private property owner is willing, we can work out some areas to plant trees in areas that we couldn't otherwise. So those are the two major components.
Okay.
One thing that I would like to add and confirm that the city forester can go out to anyone's house if they request that, if they have any concerns about any of their own trees.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a friend who's a warden, DNR warden, and has there ever been an incident where the forester has gone onto private property even with notice for a nuisance tree?
Yes.
And had confrontation?
We've not had the, well, I will say that it's always, it's always interesting when there are nuisance trees. So I would say there's been plenty of times where there's been some challenges, where people challenge it. We have taken previous to some of the ordinance and Attorney Beverage looking into the most recent statutes. We were very, we didn't enter private property unless absolutely necessary. In almost in all instances, we try to get the homeowner to consent. So I would say it's less than 1% where we've ever had to do it without their permission. This does give a little more latitude. Sometimes during the day when we're working, people aren't home, and you can't get a hold of people. This allows us to send the letter and then move forward when we do have tree issues.
Thank you.
Any other question? Sure.
As a nuisance tree.
Say an ash tree that has emerald ash bore, and it's dying, and it's hanging over somebody's, an area their child plays, right? So our concern why it's a nuisance is we don't want that disease to spread. In addition, we don't want the tree to fall and hurt somebody. So when we run into disease issues, structural issues where it could fail, that's where the city forester, if they see it from the curb, will go and make it a nuisance tree, and then there's, we issue a letter with a time period to basically correct the nuisance.
Anything else? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Just a quick comment. I'm just impressed.
That's approved, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, it is approved. It just seems to be a kind of a general concerted effort by a lot of our departments as far as taking a look at ordinances, and they're doing a really nice job of updating and putting in a lot of time and effort. And a lot of times, those are things that kind of, they're out of sight, out of mind, but they're, I think, making a really good effort, and I really appreciate the fact that they are doing that and bringing things up to date, so thank you.
Thank you. And I think all of the city staff is behind that too, because the one thing I can't stand is when someone says, well, we've always done it that way. All righty, next up, on page 17, or item 17 on page 134, consideration of the 2023 capital budget and capital improvement plan for '24 through '27. President Johnson?
Motion to approve, and then I have a question.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dalton. Question?
So it relates to the memo and the deduct off of the Bush slash Indiana slash Channel slash Lindbergh slash Belkey, and of course, the referendum language is already on the ballot because I already cast my ballot. I'm assuming that that's just a functional switch of, it still won't reduce it below $1 million, but it's just a functional shift of the money from one project to another.
So it was the 24th. Gotcha.
I have a comment.
I was gonna say, hang on, is Scott in the other room? He's coming. The bitter batter of little.
Somebody must have nudged him and woke him up.
Little director feet. How you doing? Did you hear the question?
No, you woke me up in the middle of that.
Yeah, the question related to, of course, the Bush, Indiana, Channel Drive, Lindbergh is on the ballot as for referendum. The $210,000 won't take it below the million, so that's kind of a moot point. Carrie just answered my question about functional, sort of moving it from one department to another. What exactly are you going to be doing differently in that project to be able to allow the treasurer and the assistant treasurer to be able to move that around?
When we originally identified that, you know, the limits were slightly, you know, different than what they are now. So we've truncated a little bit on Indiana, so like between Bush and Pats, we will not be including this year, and then Bush Street from Indiana to Minnesota, we will not be including. Reason being is it was getting very pricey for stormwater utility because that's an area that we're looking to actually put some infrastructure in place. So with all the other things we've got going on, it was getting rather pricey for them. So when the mayor otherwise said, hey, what do you have that we can kind of still get this project done, but kind of, you know, cut it back a little bit, that's the area we started talking with them and figured out kind of this is a good balance of what we can accomplish today and then what we can look to accomplish in the future. So we just truncated it back. So it didn't change the description. If you read the words, it reads the same, but the limits within those existing streets as they're late have changed a little bit.
Yeah, a quarter million dollars or nearly a quarter million dollars is a big shift, so that explains how you're going to do it. Thank you.
Alder Morrow.
I want to go off something that Alder, Melinda Johnson said. Clerk, he entered, sorry, Alder Johnson.
Whatever.
So they have early voting has already begun?
Absentee ballots sent out in the mail have already started. In-person early voting doesn't start until October 25th.
Okay.
And we want to remind everyone that it is a two-sided ballot. There are things on both sides of the ballot.
Please.
Yeah, but in-person voting at the courthouse does not start until October 25th?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Just for the record, it was still less discussion time on the budget than it wasn't a couple grand for the alderpersons.
Our audience is also much less than it usual.
It certainly is. Let's see, what do we got? Item number 18 on page 141 is consideration of initial funding for the 2023 and partial funding for the proposed Downtown Business Improvement District for '24 through '27. We are only committing to 2023 at this point. Next year, we'll talk about '24 and so on. Director.
I don't often stand before this body and admit that my department has failed you. However, there was a mistake, and I will take credit, when we created the boundaries for the Business Improvement District, we, with how GIS works, I'm not getting into the nuances of it, but you create a shape file, and it creates a physical boundary. And then what we did is we took every property within that boundary, put it into an Excel file, and that's how we started calculating out how much money the bid would generate, not realizing that we caught a corner of, about a two square foot corner of the paper mill property, and realized that we made about a $6,000 mistake in that. And so I'm actually asking that the council amend the finance recommendation from $70,000 for 2023 to $77,000 to correct that mistake. There is capacity within the Tiff district to make that change, and that's going to help keep those, that per thousand mark, about 50 cents per thousand, the initial year of the operation of the bid. So again, my deepest and serious apologies. I'm certain it will be on my performance eval coming up here, but we're not happy to answer any additional questions you folks might have.
Any questions relating to the recommended increase? So in your motion, whoever states that motion would state that they are asking for $77,000 for the initial 2024, I'm sorry, 2023 funding for the proposed Downtown Business Improvement District?
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second?
At $77,000, yeah.
At $77,000, seconded by Johnson. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Just quickly to reiterate what I said in committees, which is the issue of how to support the association of businesses downtown was a difficult one, confusing one a year or two ago. Glad to see a framework to not only set up the structure, but in, you know, very much a sustainable way going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Great, yeah, this is going to solve a lot of problems with the Business Improvement District. It's not the first time it was proposed. It's been proposed several times over the last decade or more, but this is the, I think we've got something solid, and we owe a lot of that, watch this, watch him, just, we owe a lot of that to Director Knasek and his staff.
With the exception of our mistake.
With the exception of Director Knasek.
Let's not forget that, okay, folks.
No, I think it's really been a better climate downtown, working with the Downtown Point Alliance and the other business owners downtown. They understand the importance of coming together and doing it for the greater good. So I think that's why we're being successful with this Business Improvement District this time around, and it certainly doesn't help that we're funding it a little bit, so that helps too.
That's correct.
Anything else? All right, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. The next several are relating to our borrowing and spending of monies. So we'll go through these one at a time. The first one is a resolution authorizing the, and providing for the sale and issuance of $9.475 million in general obligation promissory notes, Series 2022A, and all related details. Carrie, do you want to talk about any of these? Oh, look at that, we've got Greg on.
Yeah, I see him.
Go ahead. I didn't even notice because you just turned the camera on, so.
He's been patiently waiting just in case we want clear explanation, so.
Does anybody need?
What do you think?
Additional information?
No.
I think we're good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, seconded by Dalton. My head doesn't turn that fast. Trying to recognize voices now. All right, we have a motion and a second. Greg, stand by. I'm sure there's going to be some important questions later, maybe. All right, Alder, sorry, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 20 is resolution and authorizing and providing for the sale and issuance of $3.5 million Stormwater System Revenue Bond Series 2022 and all related details.
So moved.
Motion by Morrow. Seconded by Niebone. Discussion there. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item 21 is a resolution authorizing and providing for the sale and issuance of $2.89 million in Sewerage System Revenue Bonds Series 2022 and all related details. Moved by Shore. Seconded by Fischler. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item 22 is a resolution authorizing and providing for the sale and issuance of $4.41 million water system revenue bonds, series 2022, and all related details. So moved.
Second.
We're going to give it to Dalton first and seconded by Morrow. Saw the hand. Sean vocalized it a little better, I suppose. But discussion. I do have a question for Greg. Did it snow up by you today?
It snowed down by me today.
Well, down, yeah.
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Sorry.
Didn't snow up. Thanks for joining us tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Although if you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the clerk will call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye. And that is approved. Item 23 is a resolution applying for a loan of 3.35 million from the trust funds of the state of Wisconsin for the purpose of financing Tax Incremental District 11 development incentives. Moved by President Johnson, seconded by Dalton. Discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item 24 is consideration of options for filling the unexpired term of sixth district alderperson. This isn't the first time most of you have done this. However, you have several options in front of you. With the untimely resignation of Alderman Carlson, it's up to the council to determine how and if to fill that position. We have a regular election in April. That election cycle hasn't started yet. You could leave it vacant from now and let the regular election cycle take its course, filling that position in April. You could seek applicants that are qualified in the sixth district and appoint someone to fill that position until April of 2023 and let the election cycle play its course. You could also appoint someone to fill out the entire unexpired term, which would take it through April of 2024. You could also leave it vacant until April of 2024. It always bugs me with this one, too, because it's like setting the salaries. The only people that don't get to decide who represents them in the sixth district are the people of the sixth district. It's the one instance where you're not having a say in who represents you. So I would encourage you to do something short term through April 23, whether it's appoint or leave it vacant. But the choices are yours. And I saw Shore's hand first. There was a hand over here, wasn't there? And then Dalton second. So.
So I will move that we appoint in order to not have the district unrepresented, but only do so until the April election, not the remainder of the term.
Okay. So we have a motion to solicit applicants, and the council will appoint someone when they find a qualified candidate to the April 2023 term. So that means anyone who's interested in running for the sixth district seat will have to go through the regular election cycle on an irregular year. Normally, that would come up in 2022 and not till 2024. So you would be running in 2023, and then you would have to run again in 2024 in your regular election cycle. I just want to make sure that we've got that. And Dalton, was that?
I'll second that.
Second? Did you have a comment on that as well?
I was going to propose the same thing.
Gotcha. Zarazua, did you have a?
Just, I think this is, I mean, this is what we did with Christiansen. Sorry.
I know.
But not sorry, because again, same reason. It offers the first opportunity for that district. Not the first opportunity, but.
This brings up another interesting question, which we've already answered. Earlier tonight, you made a motion to freeze the salaries for electeds on 2023 and 2024. So the person getting elected in 20, or the person getting appointed and subsequently the person who wins in 2023 for the sixth district, it's irrelevant at this point because there was no raise given, but they would remain the same. They wouldn't, if you were, right? Okay, we got it. So if you chose to raise it, that would not take effect until 2024 for that district. We talked about that one today as well. Alder Christiansen.
I think I'm qualified to speak on this because I just went through it. And I will be honest with you. I agree with the mayor. I hate hearing, well, that's how we've always done it. I just went through this. As we go through this, what we're going to end up doing is getting applications, appointing someone. Within a week, he's going to have to go out and start getting, or she, getting nomination papers. They're going to have to, I mean, immediately. That's what we're asking him to do because that's December. They'll be pulling out papers. They could end up, just like I did in a primary in February, ask them to run two months into their term, ask them to run again two months later, and then eight months after that, take out papers again and run maybe again. I mean, it's.
And for the same amount of money.
Yeah. And that's fine. The money isn't, here's, I guess, I would agree with the thought of fulfilling it as, you know, just the next one, if it was a longer term. But the fact that alder terms are only two years long, having them fulfill the remainder of the term isn't a long period of time. I mean, if somebody's going to make the commitment to finish, you know, to come forth and put in the time and effort, how many people are going to want to do it knowing that, you know what, I may step forward in December and I'll be gone in April? I think it almost limits the number of people that want to step forward because it's, do I want to learn this whole process, go through everything and have it possibly be a four-month stint? I think if we appointed them for the remainder of the term, April 2024 is not that far away. It's less than a year and a half away. So the district would have a chance to weigh in again in a short amount of time. It's, that's just having gone through it and knowing the pace and the rigmarole and the, I mean, it's, I honestly think that you almost, it's almost a disincentive for people because they know that as soon as they step in, you're asking them to pull papers and start campaigning in something they've never done before, for a lot of them. Unfortunately, I've been on city council before, so I wasn't starting from scratch, not here. But for a lot of people, that's, I think it's asking a lot of them and giving them a year and a half to get their feet underneath them. I don't know that that's necessarily unreasonable. So.
Are you amending the motion?
I would propose an amendment to change it to April of 2024.
I would second that amendment.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, now, we're only discussing the amendment.
We got to vote.
And it is awkward because the campaign season, it seems like it's a never-ending cycle of campaigns. You look and there's, you know, four-by-four sheets in everybody's yard of something. But keep in mind that even though you have a campaign season, that representation for the sixth district will not happen now. The people of the sixth district will not get to choose a representative for 18 months.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty long time, especially if they get someone they don't like. Alder Zarazua.
Somebody unhappy.
I mean, that is exactly my thought, is that, again, when we're talking about perception and with the public, like, district six is who wants to be able to say who represents them. And the soon, I know that we could have an election even sooner, but that would cost money. This is the easiest way to do it, the lowest-cost way to do it. It's not easiest for that candidate, but as proven by our last person who was appointed and went through, there, you had competition, even knowing that there would be an immediate election cycle following that and another one the following year. So while it might be a deterrent, we did still have candidates. And I think if we don't have candidates, then we reassess what we're doing. I mean, if we don't have anyone apply for that role, then we need to talk about it again.
Makes sense. Alder Fishler.
I can understand that, too, how stressful it probably was to go through that. But I think the right person is not going to be afraid of that challenge. And I think this is definitely a challenging position, and the right person won't be afraid of that whole election cycle, you know, situation. And they'll probably persevere, so.
My concern is that.
No, Alder Shore. I did that again. Alder Christiansen, hang on. We got to let everybody go for the first time. Anybody else for the first time? President Johnson.
Ditto what Alder Christiansen said. It's, I believe that the representation is still there because their job is to represent. And they will be held accountable because otherwise you get a lot of phone calls, or people showing up at your door, or stopping you when you walk your dog, or any of the above. So the representation is there. Or when you're under fish fry, that happened too. So I just think that cycle is so short. Alder Christiansen was successful because he was experienced. And I'm not saying successful in winning, successful in that ready, set, go and run as fast as you possibly can. And he had a couple of really good candidates who he ran against, who were very qualified, and they did a great job. But it still was like insanity. And so I'm with Alder Christiansen.
Alder Shuda, did you have something to say? I saw you chat.
Yes, thank you. I just don't think it's part of the council's job to be appointing somebody as a district representative. So I believe that we should be voting, or the district should be voting in April for their representation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Alder Niebone.
I remember this conversation last time, and I think I had the same reservations, but we ended up doing it anyway. So I was elected to represent district seven, not district six. I don't feel it's up to me to choose somebody that's going to represent them for over a year. I just don't think that it's my prerogative as an alder. I think the folks, and anybody that applies that wants to do it will know what they're going to have to do in April, so it won't come as a surprise. And maybe they won't want to run in April. Then we'll have something else. We'll have to figure out what to do. But at this point, I don't feel comfortable putting off or appointing someone for an 18-month term. I just don't think it's my response, my right as an alder to do that, to choose someone.
Thank you. And you actually brought up a good point, because we've had it happen with the clerk's position. We've had it happen with the mayor's position, where the person who filled the unexpired term actually had no intention of running again. So that is a possible option for district six as well. Anyone else for the first time?
Okay, well. Yeah, I want to understand.
Well, we're going for the second time now, and Christiansen's been waiting.
No, I'm actually, I'm just purely to clarify.
Sure.
The concern just expressed speaks to the amendment rather than, because the original motion actually does have.
Yes.
Yep, we are only talking about the amendment at this point.
Right, right.
That's where discussion is limited to. And the amendment is to make the term full cycle, so April of 2024. Alder Christiansen, second time.
To me, if you feel that, and I understand if your thoughts are that it's really not our duty to appoint someone, then I think we should leave it vacant and not appoint anyone and just, you know, put it up to the election. If you think the district deserves representation and that that's part of our role, then we can go through the process of interviewing and choose the best person that we feel we can. But I just don't think that we necessarily will get the best person to apply, because they're going to know that the instant they get on the council, they're running immediately. And so, and trying to learn the ropes of, I mean, when I first came on, I met with every one of the department heads. I put in a whole lot of time and effort. And to think, when you're trying to do that at the same time as you're trying to meet all the people in your, you know, getting signs in the yards, and, I mean, it's just, all of that simultaneously is just, I think, it's crazy. And so.
Sounds like some. For the saving amount of money.
That is some trauma.
We have an employee assistance program.
And you're also asking them to run a campaign. People don't know them, and so they're going to, you know, they're going to probably end up self-funding the majority of their campaign. If you're going to have yard signs and everything, you, people don't know who you are. How many campaign contributions? You haven't had a chance to really establish yourself. I just think that appointing someone and saying, okay, start running your campaign next week, collect your papers, and if you have a primary, you're already having yard signs in January, installing them into the frozen ground and everything else.
District six has had a contested election.
Well, Jeremy's been on almost as long as I was on council. I think he got elected in 2006. I don't even recall if that was contested. But I can tell you that it's ironic because, as we discussed, the fate of district six, again, the only people that aren't at the table are district six. But I can tell you that we've already had interest. So the plan would be, regardless of how you choose, if you choose to fill it, the plan would be to solicit applications now with the help of the media and other facets that we have, and either have a special meeting or do it at the regular council meeting next month for the interviews and subsequent appointment. So the process has never really been more than 30 days. President Johnson.
Second time.
Just on the amendment.
Just on the amendment. So sadly, I think it was a year ago, we lost Antonande, county board supervisor. I was on county board, and we left the seat vacant because we felt that it was, it was about this time of year. Was it September? No, I think it was October, unfortunately. It was sad. And we did leave the seat vacant because we didn't feel it was right to once again, at least county board supervisors didn't feel it was right to make someone, appoint someone, and then make them run right away. So.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment further? We are only voting on the amendment. And the amendment is to appoint through the 2024 term, the full length of the term vacated by the resignation of Alderman Carlson. If you're, do we need a roll on, we probably don't need a roll on that, right?
No, not.
I request a roll call.
Okay, then we'll do a roll call. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
No.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebone.
No.
Shuda.
Dean?
Hello?
You're on mute.
No, sorry.
We're good.
Dalton?
No.
Fishler?
No.
Morrow?
No.
And motion fails. Back to the original motion, which is to solicit applications and appoint through the April 23 election cycle. Any discussion further on that? Alder Christiansen.
I guess then I would agree with Alder Shuda that that's really not our role to be selecting it. And so I will be voting no, because I think then we'll just put it to the next April election. And the person who steps forward then can focus on campaigning and not focus on trying to learn all the rules of the council simultaneously.
Just names that take me three months.
Yep.
Fair enough.
I agree.
Any discussion again on the motion? Alder Fishler.
I think that, again, just, you know, some people really look forward to this sort of challenge. Like, you know, I don't, maybe it doesn't give you a long list of candidates, but I just think this is a challenging position that, you know, and the right candidate will be the right fit.
Thank you. Zarazua.
I would also say, as a person who was appointed initially, that while we're saying that council shouldn't be the ones to choose who represents that district, there's no one at the table for district six. So this is the compromise to that, is saying, we appoint someone, and then as soon as we can have an election in 2023, then we would have district six pick their own person.
Okay.
Even if you don't like it.
I don't, and I'm going to stay up my little size five.
I think it's important that district six have a voice. I don't think they should remain voiceless. And even though we're, you know, people are conflicted about choosing, I think, you know, they're doing an interview process, so it's not like we're just picking somebody out of a crowd. They're applying, and, you know, we're doing some investigation on, you know, would they be the right fit possibly for the short term? You know, just doing an interim, you know, alder, I guess. So I just think they shouldn't go without representation, and then they can choose in April.
Understood. Any other comments? One last one from me. We have 11, an odd number for a reason. This would leave us with an even number till April. Ties get broken by breaks the ties.
Oh, yeah.
If you're in favor of the motion, you vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Restate the motion, please.
Okay, yes, restating the motion. Restating the motion is that the council will solicit persons to run and fill the position of sixth district alderperson till the April 23 election.
Okay.
Now you call the roll, right?
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
No.
Niebone.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
No.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
No.
Two, four, six, four.
Thought there was a tie.
I knew there wasn't.
No, there's not.
I counted.
Six, four, the motion passes. So what will happen is we will get it out to as many sources as possible. We have some of the media here, and solicit sixth district residents who qualify to be considered for the alderman position. The alderperson position, alder is a tree. Alderperson position will have to meet the requirements of being 18 years or older, no felony convictions, and a resident of the district. So I would ask that anybody who is interested, put together a cover letter, potentially resume, and send it to the clerk's office. The clerk will compile those, and we will make a decision in the next couple of weeks whether we have a special council meeting just for vetting or if we'll do it at the regular council meeting in November. Okay? And with that, our agenda is exhausted, and so are we at 9:08.
A video of this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, StevensPoint.com/videos.